Page order, today's the ninth of January. We're back in New Year, yea rah. And we're going to start with the public audience. Excellent, we're going to move on. Board Administration Communications, thank you Dylan.
Thank you. Well, New Year means new activities going on around the district. The elementary schools will be hosting Shakespeare productions, which will be performing a rendition of The Jungle Book for the students. Squadron Line, their holiday chorus performed on December 15th for residents at River Ridge and Avon and Belden Forest Court. And they shared snacks and punch with the residents and just spread holiday cheer. Squadron Line will be hosting fifth grade, the fifth and sixth grade Human Growth and Development Parent Informational Session on January 16th, where they invite parents to teach and answer any questions about the program. Terriffle announced that the school will be hosting their annual science fair on February 7th for students to display their scientific findings. I even participated in this its first year, so I am considering going back this year to go check it out. Central is hosting some exciting winter events such as the Starry Night Dance on the 12th. And they also recently invited families to Skate Night at Simsbury Farms. And Latimer will be doing the same on the 20th. The Story Pirates will also be performing a pep rally improv writing masterclass for the students at Latimer this month to build excitement for writing. Toon Hills will also be hosting a Pasta Night, much like Terriffle did last month, and invite family and friends to dinner to raise money for Camp Jewel. The middle school students participated in a Geography Bee last week, and the winners of the first round will be in a school-wide bee on January 23rd. And eighth grade students, I'm sure you'll hear more about this in the future, but eighth grade students in the advanced topics math class received their scores from the Mathematic Association of America for the AMC eight math test. And the Henry James average score surpassed the national average, so Mr. White wanted me to share that. And the SHS students are preparing for their new midterm schedule this Friday. I know, I for one, am in the grind and getting ready for my couple of midterms. And I also want to recognize the basketball program for having a great start to the season. Both the boys and the girls teams are doing great so far, and we're looking forward to seeing how the season unfolds. Thank you.
Great, Dylan, thank you so much. Appreciate all your hard work. Tom?
I'll say.
Yes, Happy New Year to everybody. And the date that I have for everyone, if you want to put in your calendars, hold on, is the annual Legislative Breakfast that will be held this year on February 15th at 8:00 a.m., Room 310 at the State Capitol. And this is put on by Hassa and Crabe and Crack. And it's about a two, two and a half hour breakfast, so we're putting the word out now to all Boards of Education in Area Two, which is the greater Hartford area, and the legislators to attend. As you know, the legislative session commences on February 4th and hopefully will conclude on May 9th, so the breakfast will be the following week. The snow date will be February 22nd. So it will be a short session, but there is a lot going to be going on between now and then, and more to update, so hopefully you can join me at the Legislative Breakfast.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Tom?
I'll say.
The only thing I'd like to mention is I was able to attend the Simsbury High School Athletic Awards and Hall of Fame Dinner, if that's the right way to describe it, that's on Saturday night, Hot Meadow. Absolutely terrific event. My hat goes off to everybody involved in organizing it. It was a lot of fun, a lot of reminiscing, a lot of people with a lot of history in the town and the school system. And just great to listen to all the speeches and the reminiscences of people that have been in town for many years and some, not so many, but young and old that were there, I think really got a lot out of the evening, and it was a terrific event. I hope it gets, we can repeat it at some point. As I said to Neil and a few others, it makes me think that we ought to go with a, some sort of Hall of Fame for other Simsbury High School grads that have done well in business or the arts or music or government. We've got a long list of people who have achieved a lot of great things, not just in athletics, and would be nice to recognize them in the same way, and I think it says a lot about the school district. Anyway, it was a terrific event.
Wonderful.
And again, thanks to everybody who put it together, and it really went well.
Wonderful.
Really enjoyed it.
So, I'm all set. Great. Mrs. Lemke?
Two updates for the board. Tomorrow night, the Community for Care will be sponsoring its next program around issues around gender and sexual. We have Kimora Harrington coming from True Colors, which is a nonprofit organization that centers their work around those issues, as well as Dr. Stuart Younts, who's the facilitator of our GSA at Simsbury High School. So it'll be at the Simsbury Program Room, seven, I'm sorry, 6:30 tomorrow night.
At the Public Library?
Yes, at the Public Library. The next update is that SEPTA will be having their next program on January 24th at 7:00 p.m. at the Henry James Cafeteria. And we'll be having the Department of Developmental Services, DDS, as well as Doors, which is kind of an offshoot of the Bureau of Rehabilitative Services, or BRS. Representatives will be there to talk with parents about those supports and resources. So that will be 7:00 p.m. on the 24th.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just to echo what Mike had to say about the, and I'll just add that it was the inaugural Hall of Fame. This is the first class that has ever been inducted. They didn't quite know what to expect, literally standing room only in the Hot Meadow Dining Room, over 220 people there, and not a place for everyone to sit, including the former principal couldn't even get a table. So it was amazing. And what I brought to pass to the board is, if you did not get a chance to attend, the program for the evening will really get to give, see, let you see who got highlighted that night. And we want to thank Simsbury Bank, who was the title sponsor of the event as well, so.
Very nice.
Yes, I have two updates. We have an early release next Friday on the 19th, and we'll have another math professional development for our elementary and middle school math teachers. And our sleep expert, Dr. Dan McNally, was scheduled to do last Thursday night. Because of the snow, we've rescheduled him for Thursday, the 18th, next Thursday. It will be at 7:00 p.m. in the amphitheater at the high school. And our next meeting on school start times is on January 25th in D- Room D-172.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leclair?
Just wanted to give a quick recognition and thanks to our buildings and ground staff and our custodians from all of our seven buildings. I mean, what's happened over the last few weeks, we've had remarkably few issues with the severe cold weather, and while we didn't have snow, we didn't have school during the snow event, a lot of work went to make sure our lots were cleared, our sidewalks and grounds were ready for returns. I just want to give thanks to all of them.
Excellent. Mr. Chris?
Just two quick pieces of information I wanted to share. I think I shared with the board in an update that Shawn Kimble, our excellent finance director, who is now our interim town manager, has been named Town Manager in Cheshire, Connecticut. So we continue to, and will continue to, go through a tremendous amount of transition on the town side. Shawn has been wonderful to work with. He's been a great asset to both Burke and myself, and we've enjoyed building a relationship over time, but happy for him to take that next step in his career. And we received word today, I talked to our longstanding police chief, who is planning to retire at the beginning of March. So he has also just been a blessing to work with, is a wonderful, wonderful person, and has done incredible work for our community. So a lot of change on the town side in terms of government and key people in key positions. And, you know, we'll certainly look forward to fostering those new relationships as they come through. But two real key players, just wanted to mention tonight while we're in public session and people are home watching.
That's very important to know, and we are very fortunate in this town to have some really great people who are so helpful and supportive, so hopefully we'll find some new people to step in. Dylan, this is your last meeting.
It is, okay.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking you.
I haven't heard anything yet.
End of the semester.
End of the semester.
So we've got two more?
One more. Probably one, I'm not sure.
One more.
Yeah, one more.
All right, we get one more update.
So keep the good work going.
Okay.
And I just want to make comment that we are having, Martin Luther King Day is Monday, and we will be, the town is having a Martin Luther King Day event, an annual event that we, that is, that occurs at the First Church of Christ at 2:00 in the afternoon. We have a guest speaker, and we will have people from town reading, and we will have the Henry James Choir singing. And it's really a wonderful way to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King on his day. And it's, we don't have the day off of school, so it's, everyone's welcome and open to the public and free. So I wanted to make sure people knew about that. And again, thank you to all of, everybody who took care of the schools and got our kids back and going again, and kept everything, everyone safe during our snow issue last week. And looking forward to a nice warm weekend.
Right.
So moving on to the approval of our minutes of meeting, December 12th meeting?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Opposed? So they pass. So moving on to personnel.
Just one item for the board to vote on tonight, which is a announced retirement. Brenda Goff, who's a reading and language arts consultant at Simsbury High School. Brenda had been on the schedule to retire last year. She, we exercised the stipulation of the contract, given the uniqueness of her position, that when she requested one more year, we exercised that. But this June will be the end for Brenda Goff after 31 years at Simsbury High School. She's listed as a reading and language arts consultant, a role she thrived in for many years. What I would describe her now is really has, her job has morphed into an interventionist for students. I would describe it as non-special education students who need extra support. She touches a lot of students and has especially developed a wonderful program for our students who come to Simsbury High School not speaking English, our English Language Learner Program. So a great staff, it's, she will be sorely missed, and we'll have a challenge backfilling this position, but we'll talk a little bit about those plans down the road. So the motion is the Board of Education to accept the retirement of Brenda Goff effective June 30th, 2018.
Second.
We need a first.
I'll make, I'll make the motion with.
I know, Neil can't make the motion. He still wants.
I will make the motion.
All those, anyone have any discussion?
I'd just like to say, she did a fabulous program back when my kids were going into the high school for study skills.
You told me to do it for my kids.
I told you to do it. She did a great program in the summer for kids entering the high school who just maybe needed help getting organized. And she has been just fantastic for all kids, always. And I appreciate everything she gave to our kids.
Yeah, I think, I feel the same way. We're very lucky to have her for as long as we did. And I think what she does is really important, and I think the conversation down the road as to when we really, how we can encourage better study skills at a younger age in our school district, I think is, I think it's really important. And I think it's more important than we put a lot of weight on it. I think we have to start talking about that, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because if she's not there, we're going to have to backfill it as best we can. All those in favor, I mean, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on to a gift to the Simsbury Public Schools Cultural Enrichment Committee.
Yes, so this is the second in what would be the third cycle of three planned donations from our five elementary PTOs to the Cultural Enrichment Committee. Dylan referenced the most recent round of programming, and this donation would be for $5,252, and we would request your acceptance.
So move to accept the gift.
Thank you very much. Are there any seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conversation coming? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any opposed? We are all good. Moving on to special education budget presentation.
So Sue is going to do that for us tonight, and we thought it would be a good place to start. And we're going to do something a little different with how we present special education this year. We wanted to take more of a program-based look at this. Like, we've talked about this for a few years, actually, to give the board and the general public a little bit of a better understanding of the scope of special education in terms of percent of total expenditures in the operating budget. So Sue has a myriad of different things she's going to go through, including one new request this year. So I will turn it over to you. And I think we're having a little technical difficulty with some people. I don't know if, Tom, you're going to be able to see or not from there? Is your computer working?
My, we're sharing this computer.
Matt, could I just point out that if you need, there is a handout of this exact presentation in your, in your budget binder, under the Special Ed tab, so you can just take your notes right there.
Fantastic.
So when I was here in January, or I'm sorry, in December, along with Nancy Forsberg, we really talked about the program of special ed from the Student Data Performance Sense, from our initiatives and what we're working on relative to our professional development, and the big five, as I like to refer them to. And then we ended with the story of Derek Reaganauer, who was a student that came to us at age three and was aging out, and really seeing the product of special education investment. Tonight, we're going to take a little bit of a different look at the budget. Certainly, we're going to look at enrollment and some trends, special ed versus general ed. We're going to actually give you a program cost. What does special education cost for the town and for the Simsbury Public Schools, for our students ages three through 21? Where do the sources of funding come from? What are some of those major drivers? And I'd like to give the board some reminder information around the non-lapsing fund, but also some more detailed information about our Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, or IDEA, grant, as well as our excess cost grant. I thought that would be helpful for the board. We will also review some historical staffing, as well as some program enhancements that the board has supported in my tenure in this position. And finally, get to that one staffing request for the coming year of 18 and 19. So certainly, if board members have questions during the presentation, don't hesitate to stop and ask. So this is a slide that the Board of Ed has actually seen before, but I've updated it. And it's our special education enrollment, preschool through 21. It's all students for which we have fiduciary responsibility of their IEPs. And we also compare that to the general October 1 enrollment. The numbers in parentheses at that top bar are our preschool numbers, and I felt that that was important to emphasize for the board. Last year, I really went into the narrative around our preschool history and how our numbers are growing in preschool, and you can see that reflected in this data. But overall, what we have is a decline in our overall, overall general enrollment for students, but an increase of about 4% over the past five years in special education So what does it cost to run special education services here in Simsbury? The bottom line, just over $16 million. And it's parceled out into four major sections. 70% of that, with just over $11 million, is salaries and benefits. We'll go into some of that staffing, what that looks like as far as certified and non-certified totals later in this presentation. But also out-of-district tuition, which is about 17% of our program costs. Transportation, which at about $1.5 million, is about 9% of our program costs. And then finally, purchase services and supplies at 4%. But overall, this results in about 23% of all of the Board of Ed expenditures and just over 20% of our operating budget costs. Tom?
Just a quick question, as a reminder, this is 23% or so of our total expenditures. Could you remind us what percentage of our total student population is in the special education program?
Approximately 13%.
So 13% of the students and 20, about 23% of the.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That question gets asked a lot, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just going to ask you if you can remind everybody what the tuition is, out-of-district tuition, just so that's clear.
Sure. So out-of-district tuition represents those dollars associated with those students who are placed outside of district in special education programs, that their needs are more severe, more difficult to address, and we then do that in an out-of-district placement. So it's the cost associated with that.
Just one other related question.
Sure.
Is there, have you been able to look at any comparisons in other school districts, maybe even in Ardurg, at the percentage of other districts' budget that is their special education?
I haven't looked at the overall budget. As directors, we talk about incident rate, or the percentage of special ed students quite frequently, actually. And we are just about in that average. I'm hearing, you know, 12s, anywhere from 12s to 15%, just in the Farmington Valley. I haven't done the comparison of overall Board of Ed expenditures yet, Tom, but I certainly can look into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So where does the funding sources, where are they, from where are they derived? So 85% is from our operating fund, which constitutes about 3.13, .7 million is from our operating fund. Then we either have two big chunks of excess costs. Excess costs are just over 6% of our funding source, at about $1 million. The IDEA grant, which is almost 6%, that's just under $1 million. And then our non-lapsing fund that we will also discuss, and that's $235,000. So I do want to get into some of the main drivers. Certainly, again, we'll look at salaries in just a minute, in the form of how many staff do we have, certified versus non-certified. But our other big cost centers, and these are the ones of greatest volatility, quite frankly, in special education, are our out-of-district tuition, are our out-of-district placements, as well as transportation. So this is a graph that we've developed and have shown the board over time. We certainly saw an uptick in that from last year. And what I want to share with the board is that that uptick can really be translated into two or three movements, potentially, that we need to service out-of-district, or just changes in placement. It can be that drastic of a difference, so that's why we say that's a volatile area. But we've really, we've leveled off for this year, or were projected to level off, a very slight increase, but we're remaining steady. This represents, we have 21 students who are currently outplaced. We had a high of 27, and then we've gradually brought that to this 21 number. I do believe that we have the right students in district, and those students who need that additional support are a part of these out-of-district placements. Here's the other volatile cost center is transportation. And this usually correlates with our out-of-district placements because we have to transport students there. So they may need a special van ride to their placement. So that's where most of this special ed transportation cost comes from. Another piece of that also comes from students who, for whatever reason, do receive their special education services here in district, but they require specialized transportation. They might have a medical issue or another issue where they can't ride the typical school bus. And this also includes our STEP program, which I've talked to about our internship site. So when we transport students from those internship sites, those costs are also incorporated here. So you see a slight dip in the projected cost. I'll get to that in a little bit as we talk about our non-lapsing fund. So just to remind the board, the non-lapsing fund was created in collaboration with the Board of Finance, and it really allows us to respond to some of those unpredictability cost centers of special education. And I, again, refer back to our out-of-district placements, as well as our transportation. So we were budgeted to use that non-lapsing fund of $235,000. We currently have a slightly more favorable projection in transportation that I just showed you. So at this point in time, and I say that as this point in time, the assumed use is $146,000. So what does that mean? We have slightly less of a cliff than we thought we were going to have if we were going to use all of it, as was projected at the beginning of this year.
Just a quick question, also clarification, sorry for my ignorance.
Not at all.
Is there, is the non-lapsing fund that you referred to here a specific non-lapsing fund that's specific to our special education program, or is that a general non-lapsing fund for the district?
It's a general non-lapsing fund, but we knew that we were going to be using it, if I, if I'm correct, Burke, for these areas, because we knew that this is where the unpredictability comes.
So in our, in our line item budget this past year, we added a column to essentially show use of choice funding and use of non-lapsing funding, because otherwise, it kind of distorts the history, because we're saying the budget would have been higher, but we're planning to use this, this amount of money. So there was one dollar amount that was in the transportation line for special ed, and there was one in out-of-district tuition for special ed. The other area was insurance. So the total non-lapsing was 335.
So Tom, to your point, if we find ourselves in a situation at the end of the year where we have dollars that are not expended, the process is a joint conversation between our board and the Board of Finance of how we want to utilize those funds. So there could be other places to utilize them, but they're being put from this board and from the Board of Finance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our IDEA grant. So just to give the board a little bit of history, it is a federally funded grant, and the funds are allocated based upon many factors. So when I often share with you how Simsbury is doing relative to our state continuous improvement plan, those are some of the factors that are considered with the IDEA grant and the state receiving those funds. So it's for states, the states must serve students with disabilities ages three through 21, minimally. Our neighbors next door, Massachusetts, go until age 22. Most of those IDA funds are returned back to the districts for their use, but the state may keep some portion of those funds for state-level activity. And the majority of our Simsbury IDA funds are used for staffing. So again, I shared with you, it's about $950,000 that we receive from that federal grant, and approximately $875,000 of that, 950, is used for staffing. And Burke will kind of delve in a little bit more.
It's in your folders, it's the one page in your folders.
There's another question related to that. There's been, of course, been significant change in the Department of Education at the federal level, and some funding is under review. Is there any reason to believe that this particular grant is under review in the current budget environment within the Department of Education, or not?
I have not heard, I'm keeping a very close pulse, and I'm also involved in our state legislative special ed director group, which is called CONCASE, and I have not heard that it's under review at this time.
Thank you.
Certainly, if that changes, Tom, I'll let you know. Okay, next is our excess cost grant, and this is around state grants that comes to us. And basically, the formula for the excess cost is, they take our per pupil expenditure, and they multiply it by 4.5. That gets you to a threshold, that anything over that threshold, we can apply for excess cost reimbursement. So in Simsbury, that individual student threshold amount is about $70,000. So if a student's special education costs, that could be tuition, that could be services in general, it could be transportation, if that is in excess of $70,000, then we can apply for excess cost reimbursement. We receive approximately 70 to 75% of that expenditure over $70,000. I give that range because it does depend on what funds the state receives, but that's typically the percentage over that $70,000. And we assume that reimbursement of about a million dollars. That's been pretty consistent for us in Simsbury. So now I'd like to go a little bit into our special education staffing and program enhancement history. And I would like to share with the board just what it looks like as far as staffing goes for our certified staff and our non-certified staff. So as a reminder, the preponderance of our certified staff is in the positions of teachers, okay? That also may include our speech and language pathologists, our school psychologists, our social workers, they're all considered certified staff. Our non-certified staff are predominantly our paraeducators, but our physical therapists, occupational therapists, our BCBAs, or Board Certified Behavior Analysts, those are considered our non-certified staff. So this is a five-year history of what those staffing levels have looked like. And we've gone from 2013 to 2014, 100, approximately 142 staff, and those .78s, they're not body parts, it's just that sometimes we might have a staff that might come in one day a week, or two days a week, or for a certain number of hours, but we still calculate their time with us as what we call FTE, or full-time equivalencies. So our overall totals go from 142 approximately to almost 160. Certainly, you'll notice a slight dip in that from last year to this year, I'll get to that in a moment. But between certified and non-certified, an overall increase of approximately 11% in our staffing. So what I'd like to do now is to show you at least those last three years, what did that actually mean as far as staffing and positions that the board has supported? In 2015 and 2016, we had a smattering of In twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, we had a smattering of certified staff at different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We also added a job coach, and that job coach is one that works within our STEP internship program. You're going to see a theme in these two slides of pre-K and kindergarten parastore. So that coincides with the narrative of our preschool population increasing. We also have to keep in mind that when preschool students are with us, they're not with us for the full compilation of the day, right? They have half-day programs. Students that receive primary support in preschool, those hours need to be upped if that primary support is continued, because they have a longer day in kindergarten. So you'll see some of that theme running through the staffing. We also were, in a contracted service way, working with a board-certified behavior analyst, and, and they are very specialized individuals that work with students and different behaviors, and help with plans for them, and really get at the root or the function of a behavior. And we wanted to pull that BCBAs into our staff here and not outsource that anymore. So that was the, the first year. The second year, again, to correspond with the increased preschool enrollment, we added point seven of a special ed teacher. And I've also shared with the board that we have a pretty critical mass of students who have autism or an intellectual disability, and they might require more individualized attention. And so we really, because of that mass, needed to add certain teachers into those program offerings, and they're kind of working their way through the high school now. In kind of correlation with that, many of students that have that, those types of disabilities also need support of a speech and language pathologist, even whether that to do work on articulation or social pragmatics. So that is the addition of that person's time. And again, here's that birth-to-three component, right? So as I shared with the board last year, it is truly not, almost until students are at our doorstep, that we have the knowledge of the intensity of a student's disability. So sometimes a student can be coming out of birth-to-three services that have maybe a slight articulation issue, and that is something that we can incorporate into staffing. And sometimes a student has more intense behaviors or disability that requires additional staffing. So that's where those additions came from.
There's another question related to that. One of the earlier slides showed a four percent increase over the, over the time longitudinally in the number of special education students that we serve, but we have a staff increase significantly higher than that four percent. Can we take from the comments that you've just made that even though the number of students has not increased so much, the intensity of the needs have increased so much? Is that correct?
I think you can absolutely, that is part of the story, there's no doubt about it. That, along with that intensity, comes some additional staffing issues that might require some additional level of service and resource, specifically at the beginning of a student's kind of entry into the public school system, Tom. Okay? Last year was a slightly bit different narrative, right? So we all know the, the budgetary pressures that all districts were under, and during that time, we really looked at where were responsible reductions that we could take. One was the out-of-district PPT facilitator. That out-of-district PPTs correlating with the data that I showed you before about the students that are outplaced, they were done by one specific person. Those responsibilities are now shared between myself and Nancy Forsberg. So that is something that we feel that we could take on, and I think we're doing pretty well. Nancy, what do you think? I think we're doing okay.
We're doing our own.
The paraeducators, we had some matriculation of, of certain students leaving, but every single year, we take a look at our paraeducation staff, and how do we meet the needs of the IEP, and are there any efficiencies? Because students are now coming together from elementary to middle school or middle to, to high school. We look at that very, very closely every year, and we were able to actualize some efficiencies there. The board will also remember that we had three school psychologists at the high school. And what we did this year is we implemented another model where we have a graduate intern from UConn, and that person is kind of taking on the role of that school psychologist. She helps out with evaluations, which is fantastic. That was some of the pressures that our school psychologists were facing at the high school. So just thinking about a different way in which to make sure students' needs were still met, but to do that, thinking outside of the box a little bit, and that resulted in that one-oh decrease. Todd, you look like you had a question.
Something like the, the school psychologist, or a counselor. I mean, we're, we're talking about it in context of the special education budget, but it, it's not a person that's only dealing with kids with special, you know, with the special education program?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. We also, as a reminder, we do have an additional social worker there as well. So I would say the majority of that person's time is within that special education realm. However, there are another general education resource that's also available to our high school students.
Right. So this isn't, this is someone who, I mean, helps the entire community as well.
Yes. And then finally, the speech and language pathologist, we had a resignation, and at that time, we were able to do a little bit of shifting. Again, still being able to address students' needs in the IEP, that's never compromised. But again, we're always looking for those natural efficiencies that we can actualize in special education. So that's been kind of the three years in review, as well as kind of the overall picture of funding and cost relative to special ed. With that, we do have one budget request for the coming year. This is something that was initially in my proposals last year and was supported unanimously by all of our elementary principals, and that's the elementary social worker. When I first started in this role in Simsbury, we didn't even have a full-time elementary social worker, okay? So she worked four days, example, a week. When she retired, really advocated to make sure that that was a one-point-oh, and, and something that Matt certainly supported and the board certainly supported. And we hired a woman by the name of Erin Naspo, who came to us through New Britain, had a phenomenal skill set, and she revolutionized, quite frankly, our thinking in Simsbury regarding what an elementary social worker does and can do, and the resource it can be to our students and our families. We then added a second elementary social worker, and that was Christine Golden. So she wanted to go back to her roots and her passion of that elementary social work. So we added Christine last year. So that's two-point-zero FTE right now, that is allotted to elementary social worker. The work that they're doing is incredible. They do direct services, and that could be anywhere from doing emergency assessments on a student in crisis, working with DCF around issues of abuse and neglect, hooking parents up and families up with resources that they need outside of the school system in the greater community. And then there's a ton of indirect things that they do as far as consultation. They'll also teach lessons in, for a whole group classes at the elementary, whether that be on behavior regulation, or kindness and respect, or inclusion. That's a big role in what they do. So they've become invaluable, and they've really brought an incredible value added to our elementary community. Therefore, we're requesting a third for next year. And if this request were to actualize, we would have one elementary social worker designated right to squadron line. It's our largest elementary school, and it also has our preschool population. So it'd be serving the preschool through grade six at squadron. And then the other two social workers would split the remaining four schools, so they each have two schools that they're working with. So that would be our budget request for the coming year. I'm not sure if the board has any additional questions that they would like to ask.
About social workers, again, just some background, I have this kind of hazy memory that at, at the Avon School District, not too long ago, there was a huge controversy around a decision by the board there. I think it was to eliminate the social worker positions and replace the social workers with psychologists.
Psychologists.
Could you give us a little color on, on all that and, and why we feel that social workers are so valuable? I mean, you've already mentioned kind of what they do. But, but if, if, if somebody said, oh, whoops, we got, got to cut out our social workers, what would your response be to, to that? I mean, what are the implications of not having these social workers?
Please don't. That would be my initial response. Please don't.
Yeah, yeah. That's hypothetical, of course.
You know that I've been sharing over the past three years that one of our big five is around mental health. And how do we support the mental health of our students pre-K through twenty-one? They are a crucial element in providing that mental health support. The other piece is that they have a different kind of relationship with families. Families in a community like Simsbury who may be hesitant to approach and say, I have need, and a financial need, or another kind of need, they are accessible to those families, and they make sure that they hook families up with these resources. What does that mean for our students? If those basic needs of our students are met, then they're going to be more available and ready to learn. So that's why I would say they are an invaluable part of our organization.
There's been some great specifics around the work on school attendance, particularly some of the elementary levels. I don't know if you want to speak to that as one of the outreaches and connects with families of, of students that were having difficulties getting to school, and a collaborative relationship and trust built between the social worker.
Social workers get into the idea of attendance.
And looking at that data on attendance, and reaching out and creating different programs and incentives to get kids, you know, back in school. There's been, you've seen some real successes there.
That's measurable.
Absolutely.
It's measurable. And what we also see, and this is not just in Simsbury, but across, patterings of school attendance can often lead to school anxiety. So then what becomes an attendance issue becomes an anxiety issue and a more serious mental health concern. And they're in it at the ground level, they're looking at that data, they're seeing when the flags are up of, where's this kid been? And they've been able to really make those personalized connections with families and come up with some really out-of-the-box and innovative interventions to say, we care about you, we know that you've been missing, and we want you back in our communities.
It's a lot, you know, from experience in like, with my children in schools, they're the people that talk to the kids off the school, the playground.
Yeah.
And they're the people who bring kids together, kids who have very few issues with kids who have issues, and try to coordinate how to teach from each other, peer group, peer support. And they're the ones who are very involved in making that happen. But the bottom line is if we keep, if we, if these little kids get support, then they don't need as much support when they hit junior high and high school, because they've learned the coping mechanisms at the proper age to learn them, and then they can move forward. So it's, budgets is so hard to even, when you take it from budget to human, humanity, it's a painful, painful place to be. But we know that there is measurable difference in supporting kids in elementary and how they can be very successful in junior high and high school.
I didn't mean that question to be an expression of view about the idea of social workers.
No points to bring out.
I appreciate that. And they work hand-in-hand with our school psychologists. We meet on a monthly basis, we talk about what we're seeing, we delve into our practices and become better. And that is so important specifically around the issues that society is facing around mental health, so.
I apologize if I'm making you repeat yourself, because this is what happens when I read and try to listen at the same time. It doesn't always go well. Last year, we reduced the school psychologist. So you're not asking for that, you're asking for a social worker instead.
A social worker, because what we did with that reduction in school psychologist is that we added a graduate intern from UConn.
To cover that work.
To cover that work.
So we're going to sustain that.
Absolutely. We're going to continue to sustain that.
And that will take care of that hole, because we filled it.
Absolutely. We, we backfilled in a very different kind of way.
Yep.
But I believe that that need is met currently, and there's this additional elementary social worker need. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Anything you want to add to it? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm assuming we're going to capital improve it, but Burke, are you going to tell us where to put this?
So, yes, well.
In our budget?
You can, you can put it behind special ed for now. We, we don't have a separate revenues tab. The page there is really a very preliminary version of what, what would be that pink-colored page is when we get the line item budget, so this is a very early version of it. The backside of it just tells you more detail about what, what each of the grants are. But just wanted to highlight that we have roughly three million seven hundred and eighty thousand, sorry, seven hundred and seventy thousand roughly of anticipated state, federal, and private grants. Probably only about twenty thousand less than last year, so very, very stable at this time. And your three largest grant sources, Sue talked about two of them, the IDEA is shown there at nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, shows about how that breaks down, how many FTE thirteen point six nine that are charged to that grant. The other big two, we heard about the excess costs tonight, a little over one million dollars, and then just pointing out that the open-choice attendance grant is about one point four million. So you see where the breakout of those dollars are. So that really is, is the lion's share of, of, of our grant funding. In terms of revenues to the town, ECS is, is the largest component of that. And with all of the, the twists and turns of our budget process, when we finally got a state budget in October, you may recall that then there were some cuts in November. But just to step back from it, the town will receive more than five point two million dollars, and we estimated for the mil rate purposes about five point one. So we ended up in a, in a decent place for this year. We know next year is, is a whole new process, but just wanted to give you a little bit of background.
Thank you very much. It was very helpful.
And, and before we segue to the capital budget, with the binder, you know, that will continue to be filled in, in coming, coming weeks, some of those tabs are obviously empty because they haven't happened yet. But really, you know, using that first page of, of, of our guide of what is, you know, what is the budget review topic for each of the coming, coming meetings, down at the bottom section, definitely want to point out that those are subject to change, because those are dates for Board of Finance or referendum dates, and those are potentially subject to, to change. For tonight's conversation about the six-year CIP, that tab, we do have the same exhibit. So again, for your convenience, if you want to refer to that hard copy, it's in your book. And last but not least, everybody's favorite budget, budget, budget history sheets are still there. We spend a lot of time trying to revise those. We have just about everything done. There's a few items that are right out of the audit, and since the audit is, is not completed, the town audit, we couldn't finish those yet, so we've indicated that those are expected in the month of.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful to have this.
Chris, we can get you a new one. I know that was always your favorite.
I love that.
Excellent piece of information.
That revisionist history, and then there's true. Okay, so just to, just to talk a bit about this second administrative draft of the six-year capital improvement program, if everybody's got that tab, and that's one of them. The memo that was in your packet, you know, gives, gives some of those highlights that this, the second draft is a result of comments at your December fifth workshop, and the key project in, in dollars remains to be the Henry James Phase Three renovation. So the scope has not changed, and as I've noted in the outline, we're in the process of getting the architects at Castle Booze to give us an updated number, you know, given a one-year delay in estimated construction start and what that inflationary cost might, might be. So at your next, your next version will, will include a, a, a number that will be revised. We added, we added the, on the, on the top line, we added a school facilities master plan and reconfiguration study project cost, similar to what the town budgeted last year for all the town buildings. We definitely need an architectural eye and, and detailed review of all seven schools to help drive this plan going, going forward. We've spent a lot of time focusing on the one building of Henry James, and, you know, really, it, it, it helps to, you see how things are starting to get pushed. Notably, the Latimer Lane project is now, is now in year two, and we've, we certainly have a difficult time doing more than one major project at the same time. We would hope that with a facilities master plan, which I would, I would estimate would probably take a good year to plan, which I would, I would estimate would probably take a good year to, for them to finish that work, we'd have a much better sense of what, what the future costs and future priorities for maintaining our buildings would, would be. And then also this sort of side-by-side issue of a reconfiguration study, and as the board saw, a feasibility study for the potential of a sixth-grade wing at Henry James, what would be the impact on other schools, and what is the impact of enrollment decline at the high school, which we know is coming shortly, the modular future, the modular buildings there. All of those things, I think, need to be looked at in fairly short order. The Board of Finance has certainly supported this concept, so I would expect that they would be supportive of that new project. Just want to pause in case there are any questions about it.
Questions?
Comments? All right. So then, the other changes since prior CIP is that in the area of the high school stadium renovations and improvements, we've really broken out that, which used to be a singular line, and we've broken it out into three more specific areas with some cost estimates for two of the, two of the three. So we are still planning to have some cost estimates for a stadium facility before the end of this, this CIP process. That would be to give us some permanent restrooms, some kitchen area storage and lockers have been discussed there. So that's probably the most variable cost, which depends on the size of your, of the ultimate facility. But then, the next two items, which we show in the third year of the plan, would be replacement of our existing home bleachers, the press box. We'd like to keep the storage area under that that exists there now. And we have a cost estimate for that of $725,000, keeping in mind that there's ADA accessibility that has to be carried out. And now, the understanding I have is that there'd have to be some sort of elevator to the press box. So this number would have to-
Really?
With all of those. And speaking with the building inspector, that's, that's the take that he had at this point. And so we would need some help with that. And then we've broken out that the visitor's side bleachers, also, we would look, be looking to upgrade those, and that cost estimate you see here of $225,000. So those, so those, those are still, you know, based on Jeff Penny, who gave you a good overview of his master planning at your workshop. We're also looking at the second turf field, which was discussed. I'm just highlighting that while this has been on the plan previously, we talked about moving that out to year two was the feedback that we had. And I've also highlighted the fact that we talked about adding something to the scope, which would be considering lighting of that field. Because if you're going to have, you know, have those, the same needs that we use lights for the main field for both games and practices, it would be, it would be helpful there. So that, that number of 1.55 million includes lights, which are about $400,000. So there's no other new items other, we talked at the first draft about the roof replacement. Expect in the outer years of the plan that we're going to have a few more roofs to be added. We highlighted at the bottom of the plan that there's going to be some school security dollars that we're going to be asking for, as well as some, some basic building maintenance. And I would see those as things like replacing gym, gym floors in several of our schools, things of that nature that are too big for CNR amounts that we, that we have annually. So you'll be seeing more at your next meeting. Any other questions that I can help discuss on what's on here?
Burke, just that we had the one meeting with town staff.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes. And so we did have our first staff level meeting, a draft of the total plan, which includes our projects. We'll be scheduling a second meeting shortly, and then ultimately, you know, trying to, with the town finance office, trying to get a sense of what do all the asks cost within the, you know, within the debt and borrowing schedule. So that'll be the next step.
Anybody have anything they want to ask? Questions they have? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Burke.
Appreciate the details. More to come. Moving on to, I would like to mention, I did not mention before, but we want to thank Terriffel School for our lovely Christmas cards. I think we got some other Christmas cards from other schools. I want to thank them as well, but that was last month, and I don't remember all stuff. I'll bring that to the next meeting. But thank you very much for this. And so that was what I want to say. Anybody have anything else? Any public audience? Public audience are further showing up to help. Thank you for being here. On that note, our next Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, January 23. More budget, and we'll see you then.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in paper?
Aye.
Are closed? Thank you all very much.